And next, the Non-Hazard Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting, on March 2, 2024, at 6:30 PM. This is for high school candidates. This meeting of the Non-Hazard Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public that is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular discussions that require us action by ourselves. These items may include those discussed at previous meetings. Present to the board for discussion is... At the boarding seat, please turn on the seventy-seven cell phone at this time and start our education.
I present the Statute of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time of the year, we meet our indigenous and indigenous communities. Non-Hazard Public Schools is a community to acknowledge the initial people whose traditional land we are gathering on today. To recognize the initial people in this household is how the expression of recognition and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since studying in Oregon, and in this land which the second or third wife in ten tribes has resided and has continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to help this land our case when it is there. Today, we're also going to start something new. We're going to read the headings of our educational governance agreements. And if you want a full copy, it's on the table in the front. But we want to publicly acknowledge, and as board members, we're committed to the following: professionalism, respect and equity; inclusive collaboration; responsibility to afford within the vision; dedication to community engagement; and a commitment to continuous growth. So I'm going to do our book. Can you read here? We can go here. Any bond here?
Nathan Thompson here.
Devolker here.
Our first item is to approve agenda.
I'd like to, um, I'm by the general in class. I'd like to add the presentation of the Sex Ed Advisory Board of Law laws in there. Um, I've been working on it as an initial presentation. Um, I'm not sure whether the superintendent is willing to...
It's added to my, under the superintendent report item B.
Thank you very much, yes.
Do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
On legal?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. And we'll test for our superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Our first item under my report this evening is, um, a annual reporting update from our food service provider. So we have representatives from this evening from Southwest Food Service Excellence. My lawyer is Kristen, and I can't really see from the podium, and she can read this through the... So thank you very much, Kristen.
Yes, thank you. Um, my name is Kristen Markins, and I am the general editor for your food service, Southwest Food Service Excellence. Before I get started on my slideshow... Um, on your desk, I put our general newsletter. We did a newsletter every month highlighting what we've done throughout the district. And this month, we highlighted our staff, our leads, and some of them, great, that are here with us tonight. Um, they are the hub of our school district in their cafeterias. They make magic, they make our job easier, and they love our students. So I'm just cannot express how thankful I am that they import our buildings, import our family, and they serve times of credit for them, and I forgive them. So I want to make sure that everyone has a copy of the county's, you know, at least. Okay, we'll start on the fifty-sixth slide. Okay, so distribution meals. So this summer, we served over twenty-six thousand breakfast meals and lunches for our staff. I mean, for the community, sorry. And it's a big production. Y'all have board meetings in here. Um, you'll probably saw all the stacks and groups and everything that happens, the magic behind this. Chef Jason is our magician when it comes to orders, orchestrating, organizing, um, everything that we do. It's a big production. It takes a lot of prep, a lot of organization to successfully run this. So very proud of the staff that came and helped all summer long, and we, there was a lot of them, they did good. Um, the second slide is an SFP promise. We promise to train our staff, to recognize our staff. So since I've been here, my second year, um, we do monthly meetings. We do lots of hands-on training. There is a picture up to the right. Um, his name is Lori, he runs at the middle school. He makes, I think he makes the best Spanish rice. He follows the recipe to the T. And I wanted all the leads to see how, you know, the average employee knows how to make the rice. So he taught the leads, you know, training one day. The others that's on the top left, looks like a whole bunch of different pieces of paper. Last year, at the close of the school year, I asked every employee, tell me what the best part of your year was. Tell me what you would like to improve. And then we always cater lunch during our meetings, like, tell me your favorite restaurant. Um, the top answer for all of them was, when I came, I kind of changed their recipe a little. They complained a lot of the collared shirts, and they said they were heavy and that they were thick and they were hot. And I said, well, let's wear t-shirts. Let's wear lunch lady t-shirts or the school t-shirts. And ninety percent of them said that was the best part of their year. That one little change where my employees made their year. Um, they also liked some of the promotions that we did. Um, they're out of the year. Um, and then... T-shirts, t-shirts were the big deal. Okay, so the next slide. So last year, when I was here this time, I got to announce that we were, um, got a grant for local schools. And so this is some of the benefits of what we did. We had, um, greens and lettuce and cucumbers and other fruits and vegetables throughout the year that we got to give to our students and put in all their salad bars. Um, the growing season is very short. And so we didn't get a whole lot of fall vegetables because once you sign up with a farmer, you have to stick to the certain farmer. So I'm hoping to broaden that throughout next year so I can get lots of more fall vegetables and things like that. All right. So we, um, have surveyed a lot of students throughout the year. Um, we've done a lot of surveys for breakfast, especially in the elementary schools. And some of their favorite breakfasts, we, Chef Jason made samples of them on this table for y'all to look at and enjoy. Um, and to see what your students and elementary students are eating. Lots of whole grain enriched products, um, sandwiches. We make our own sandwiches with, um, egg McMuffin sort of sandwiches. Um, I think today at the high school, we had chicken business, which was a hit. We sold out, so that will be up a little more maybe early. Um, so we're really listening to their, to their voice. At the middle school, um, we had a station kind of in the middle of the year that wasn't built yet with the remodel. And that was, they just loved it. The students loved the chicken wings, um, chicken by brawies, the stir fry when we do pasta. Of course, they love the deli station too, because it's the number one thing. And it's the deli station. We've seen pictures of the deli station. You'll know why, because it's gorgeous. Next slide. Um, on Tuesdays, Chef Jason conducts roving chef. And our roving chef program is where Jason comes in and he's chef at half, and he does his pizza thing and shows students how to make pizza, and we cook them, and we eat them, and they get to decorate them. Um, during while they're cooking in the oven, I get an opportunity to talk about nutrition and talk about the fruit of the month. Um, and also serve these then with students one-on-one. So it's a good opportunity for us to do a whole bunch of different stuff in this time. So I gravitate to the middle school. I love the middle school. So these pictures are from the high school. Um, I have an employee, she loves taking pictures and sending them to me because she's so proud of what she serves every day. So a lot of these pictures is from Maggie, who, um, just kind of just moved over to McGuire, but she is passionate about her meals, putting together pictures every day. So those are just some of the different pictures we have. There is a shepherd's pie, there's a hero, um, pasta, and then a lasagna. So lots of fun stuff at high school. So also a promise is to be involved in the community. Um, we did a healthy cooking dinner in the fall. A lot of lessons learned on that. I will now partner with principals, and when they have things going on at their school at night, I will partner with them to make sure I'm there with other parents and the community's there. So we have one coming up at the painter on April tenth. Um, to be a part of that community with them, we're doing, I don't know what Chef Jason's going to do yet, but I'm sure it'll be fabulous. Um, I also volunteer for brawies, and I've done lots of hours since August volunteering at the shelter. And then we donated dinner for the Optimist Club. That was last year's. We did that with the charity. Um, okay, now to the fun stuff. Um, so our meals have grown so much, and a lot of that is due to us getting free meals. Um, thankfully, the state of Michigan approved that. I'm very proud of that. So we are up for breakfast. Um, point five seven, five point seven. Um, we changed a couple of things at the middle school. We added a breakfast part in one of the hallways in December, which, um, we're starting to see an increase every day on that. The lunch is up thirty-six point nine. Um, probably most of it comes from the middle school. We are almost tripled our numbers at the middle school for lunch, and some there all the time. Um, they are busy. We, they love it. And I think a lot of it is because it looks new and it's brand new, it's bright and shiny. Um, we do a lot of numbers. The olive cart is down slightly, and from what I've gathered from other districts, most of their olive cart sales are down due to free meals. Um, so I think this is pretty normal where we are compared to the other districts on. That's it. Thank you. Any questions?
I thought you were going to do something that I noticed when I was reading your newsletter, thinking of that, um, and to the folks that, um, you with you. Um, collectively with your leads, there are a hundred and eleven years and three months of food service experience between them. And I think that's phenomenal, and I can see that all the other pictures that we're seeing. Um, so I appreciate that. And then, um, just, I'd be nice and happy to see that, you know, it's, it's, I mean, it's basic, but, um, definitely, your kids are getting fed, and so, um, you all, your part in that, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
I was very grateful to you. So, um, thank you for all the work that you do, for everybody that's here tonight for sharing their faces with us. Uh, and I agree, I think the emphasis on nutrition and health and meals is fantastic. And, um, so yeah, we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Now, I'll just add that, um, we do know that we will have some sort of, some food program this summer coming up. Um, Kristen and Ginger are still working out all of the details on what exactly that will look like. We anticipate it will be fairly similar to what we did last summer. So we're really happy to keep the program, and then also keep the meal distribution program as well, so. And then we hope we're able to keep free meals next year, but you know, that decision is, um...
Yeah, there are controls, but we're all just going to not take them, so we'll get to it. Because really, we hope it's different.
For our students, we've heard that here, right, from our students that have gone to work meetings. They share with us that they appreciate free meals and want that to be included.
Okay.
What do you, do you know what that decision will be made about free meals?
For next year? Well, last year, we found out, like, middle of July.
Whatever they finalize, it's the same budget.
So, so there are, we're working on the summer applications now. So that, that will be, I don't know, should we share more of our bear in that process?
Sure. Yeah, the applications, I, I think are open now, um, for next year, which also includes the summer. But I did attend them, and we are guaranteed, we are a rural district, which means we do the non-convergent which is basically the drive-up once a week at the high school, which is the majority areas. Um, both of our locations that have been this summer are also in the area that is allowable to do summer food programs. So we know that we're third summer food program. Um, as far as free meals for next year, it's, it's a wait-and-see thing, but with the governor's budget, there is no incentive for it. It still has to look like a constant, and so we don't know where it will end up, but there's, there's hope.
And my guess is that the positive numbers that Kristen shared with you this evening are, um, that there are similar situations happening in every district that have the food program. So hopefully, there'll be some momentum behind that to support the program. Thank you, Kristen. Next, I'm the agenda leader of the, um, of our Sex Ed Advisory Board, and a presentation of the bylaws. The, the, this evening.
Hello, board. Good to be with you. I am Kate Connors. I am one of the co-chairs on our Sex Ed Advisory Board, wrapping up year-round. I was trying to decide today how many years I've served as a co-chair position. A while. Um, and I am so excited that we have spent a majority of our time this year on bringing new formal bylaws. Um, we have functioned primarily under the laws that the state has in place for Sex Ed Advisory Board, but that has left some question marks around the things, um, that could be more interpreted. And so we have leaned heavily on historical information. And we also, just so you understand the process of it, we went to MDE and found a sample for the bylaws. So that's the framework that you see, um, present here. We also have to give a huge shout out to Mary Martinez. She sits on our SBAP, and she loves bylaws. So if you have anything like that for her to do, like, she's excited and happy about them. Um, I don't know if she'd want everyone to know it, but I think she would, because she loves it. She loves it. And she did such a nice job. I honestly think we should send our bylaws to MDE because they're so improved from what they had to offer us as a sample because she just cleaned them up so much. She had a lot of expertise in getting the language right, consistent, and, um, just understanding how the flow needs to be. So hopefully, you've had a chance to see them. Um, some of the things that we discussed, we actually had a committee of the SBAP that worked a bit extra outside of our meetings to discuss things like what would be the appropriate parameters for co-chairs. The state is clear, one has to be a parent, but the second was a little bit more ambiguous. And what we planned on and offered to you in these bylaws is that the second should be a health-certified teacher and preferably the person who is filling the Sex Ed supervisor role that's required in the district, um, and as well as the parent that needs to be there. We talked a lot about number of members. There was some good historical data in this area that had about twelve for most of the life of the SBAP. And, um, we landed on eleven so that it was an even number. That's what is before you. We talked about student reps. There was a lot of discussion around student reps. And I want you to hear from me that this board values the student's voice. It's essential. Um, we're profoundly grateful for that. But the controversy was a bit more around should they be a prominent voice, especially in a group of eleven, and especially around something as potentially controversial, um, as sex education. So what we have brought to you keeps the students' ethic historically, you know, present there, they have a voice there, um, but they have a voting voice in what we are recommending to you. Uh, should I just say, well, should I have any notes on to make sure? Did I forget to highlight something important? Uh, another thing that was really important, we saw, um, the last time we asked for applications to this board, we had such interest, and that was phenomenal and exciting. But we also have seen that some members are more consistent than others. And so to put in place some parameters that would allow us to come to you and say, hey, due to lack of attendance and lack of communication, oh, now, in their reason for lack of attendance, we would like these members' terms to terminate so it could be filled with people who would be, um, able to serve. We put parameters in there for when they, we provide about that. We put parameters in there for how much attendance is required. Um, I'll, we'll see first about exactly. So overall, just counting to give some clarity to things that have historically been happening, um, but to give just a place where it is formalized and where we will have the chance to implement these on us. So we're at the spot now where the legal review is happening, and I understand it's not finished, no problem. Um, but wanted to come forward and just tell you the work that we have been doing, give you a chance to ask any questions that you might have need. Um, and we'll be in a position to approve when your legal review is done.
I'd like to ask you, please, uh, even the bylaws cover things like the format of the minutes and how the agendas are structured, how the agenda items are going to be highlighted, the process to go into that. So, um, it's quite broad in what it covers, but I think it helps clarify every loose lines, um, some of the processes and how you function. Um, because it's hard to have these conversations, especially having some parameters around it. Um, and there's a lot of input from a lot of people, and I think the process went very, very well. Thank you, everyone. Mary Martinez, again, shout out. She was very, and this really helped us think as a group. And there were a lot of those students. So I think these, these recommendations that, of these bylaws, um, have great value that will definitely help this group as they move forward. The other thing that we had talked about was how much I read today with our educational governance agreements and the parameters. We had had conversations about once this board got back, looking at that, seeing how that could be some of that, the help of the ethos of the meetings and how they are working in respect to each other. But in general, I think this is a great, great piece of work, and I think it's really going to help in the future for the Sex Ed Advisory Board.
I think we did include the language that will allow those who serve on this board to also sign an official agreement of, hey, these are the ways we will, I can't remember which section it's in, I don't have it, but I think it is in there. Not spelled out specifically, but just, maybe this is how this is going to go.
I was just going to say, as we have just been through something similar, I mean, not a bylaw, but the review, we know that this is not easy work, but important work. So just want to say our appreciation for putting the time in to, to get things in order, just, you know, not just the numbers now, but for thinking about.
Thank you. So I have quite a few readings by laws about the group. Question about the clergy person that's on it and that's mandated by the state tablet person. Is there anything in the bylaws that, how does it decide? If you have two clergy people that want to be on it, how do you decide which one serves?
Currently, actually, in our currently approved, employee members have been sixteen, and three of those have been clergy. Um, one from the community church, one from central church, and one from, oh, it's a community church. Um, central church clergy, the community church clergy, both also parents in the district. And so we have tried to prioritize that dual role as much as possible. If, if someone is clergy or health professional and a parent in the district, I mean, that's a, a preferred person to just clergy. Because you could certainly have someone serving that will, who's clergy no longer have any children in the district, or never have children in the district. Um, one of those clerchies terms is expiring. So because we're going to reduce the number, that term will be filled. Um, I can't remember where, if those other two have terms that expire this same year, they do. So when the renewal happens, um, you know, the discussion will have to happen at that point. There was some other elders that just said, hey, we really want that to be one, so we can have more, so we just get it. But my, my feeling is that they can fill the dual role of parent and, that's a win.
Sure. Thank you for clarifying, because I didn't think about it the same way you did, but that was my mind, how they can have different roles and multiples. I was just up on there, I don't know if you want, until there doesn't, I can do some more, so, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And there's our process. So it's an application process and a review by the Sex Ed Advisory Board, and then a recommendation process to us. But I've seen a lot of steps, um, and then also helping them understand the rule. Sometimes that conversation, I think the best way, I think, was to tell them, I can matrix this, right? So we have an edge to, we have middle school, elementary, high school educator voices on it. So we try to keep as many voices, and the best way we can ensure that sometimes it will all happen.
Yeah. Especially in the decisions when we pay Catholic, I think that dual role is going to be a middle point.
I just want to thank everybody for their work on this. I love structure when it comes to a lot of different, varying perspectives possibly, and something that is so important. Usually when something that, or people are very passionate about it, which is great, um, they got some structure in there so that everybody's, uh, passion can be communicated in a group. So Tim and everybody else who had a hand in giving this facilitator organized moments, they can hear what the people, that will be for.
I'm going to really commend Mary Martinez's hard work. She's like some people of policy. Again, she's amazing.
I'll refer you to this. Thank you for the work, and I think providing the structure for topics that exists is crucial. Um, I'm excited to see the section about minutes as well, so that you can help not just in the structure of the group and the membership on the role, but also hopefully getting a little bit of that structure on the day-to-day business that you're running. Um, if you can, um, use or get inspired by our community, but, you know, the educational governance agreements, um, it, you know, I, it also lines up right what our communities do and, uh, the standards that we live for ourselves. So I encourage you to check with them. And we can make very proper work, um, but it is a, a great, great thing to see. Um, I keep wondering, so I know it's going to grow, I don't have a chance, but now before it goes for us, is the thought to adopt them for next year? And so starting in, I think, in August is when you start the next year?
I, I think if your adoption happens at the end of this school year, you just kind of have to adopt them with understanding that we have to do some fitting links to get our members to the correct spot, and that's, you know, those kind of things. So our compliance will probably take into the new year at least.
And so that was my question. Once, whenever we could, uh, maybe whatever happens, um, you then have to go from sixteen to eleven, right? And so I didn't know if you had thought about other processes for the go, and if maybe you have members that are not regularly attending, maybe that's a...
We have looked at that at length. I did not read, read that today, but we have looked at that at length. I think it's not going to be too challenging to get where it needs to be in the new school year. Um, we have maybe even a couple positions available. So we, Tim wisely suggested checking the notes who did not have expiring terms to see if they can continue to serve. And then we have those couple who are not feeling comfortable, so, you know, that kind of was some explanatory. Um, so between all of those things, I think we're going to make our position to be a landmark in the year.
My last question regarding, you mentioned that that count is, is that the doubt is present?
I was going to ask this to students. So the students, as non-ending members, they can still be present in the room on top of that number. It would be eleven voting members.
And just to clarify, so there's several ex-official roles, like school board members and ex-official, and this ex-official. So there's other people in the room, so that are not clearly the voting members, which, uh, which aligns with the state law and all the requirements of health and clergy, parents, and so on.
And then I got, I got one more that's related, but...
And then I got, I got one more that's related, but remind me, this meeting that's open to the public. Yes, um, can you remind us where and when we need to face that for our, um, viewers or, um, staff?
We need to schedule our next meeting, it's not currently scheduled, but they do go on the website, just like the school board meetings. And typically, we've been trying to meet, um, in the main building upstairs. Um, it is a morning, our morning night, it works right before your meeting, then we'll be here in this building, just so those who have to be here can, or the, some type of a secretary's classroom, um, that's a, the spot in this building. We'll be right back.
Should I say to pick you on Monday night?
Often, yeah, Sunday. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. The next item on our report is our continuing look at board policies. Um, also, I will pull up our, our new set of policies, we're going to look at forty-five hundred and forty-six hundred this evening.
I have it.
You got it open, okay, wonderful, thank you. So we'll start, we'll just go through the policy sections, and then if you all have questions, we can stop. So we'll start with forty-five oh one. Um, I, I should pick up and say that the forty-five hundred section is focused on administrators and supervisors. So forty-five oh one is the definition section.
And there's no comments for any one minute you move on?
Sure.
I'm also...
Okay, thank you. Forty-five oh two is assignment and transfer.
No other questions for us?
Forty-five oh three, performance evaluation. Forty-five oh four, performance-based compensation for administrators and supervisors. Do you know that this was a policy that we did revise back in January?
Now, if that was the only question we, we were writing, right?
I agree with that. Forty-five oh five, production and recall.
No questions?
Forty-five oh six, discipline.
Questions?
Forty-five oh seven, termination.
Questions?
Forty-five oh eight, administrative non-renewal.
There's a couple on this one.
Okay.
So this was just something I noticed in the paragraph four. It says that we need with the majority of the board, and that's the first time I've seen it say we need with the majority of the board, instead of the board, so I just wondered why that was there.
So are you section eight parent report? Oh, yeah, I see.
Just to get, I wrote a comment with this, um, which was also my interpretation that to make that decision, we don't need to have a full board, which is the board. That's how our effect is, but it's true that we don't usually have that. It's the first time I've seen it as well, uh, and so I'm not sure why it's so like here, I think it was too, every time. Can you talk about board meeting limitations always just one, um, if that might be a question?
Sure, I can, I can pull that out, I would agree with you that the board wouldn't take any formal action if it was less than the majority of the board, but, um, it, I, I don't recall it being held at this either, so that, that may just be an inconsistency. Are there other spots in this particular policy, or it says that or it just that?
That's one of the ones I...
Okay. Okay, I'll ask on that, um, are there other questions on that policy? Okay, and so that is all of the forty-five hundreds, then we'll move to the forty-six hundreds. Which this section is on the superintendent, so forty-six oh one.
Yeah, no questions.
Forty-six oh two, hiring.
There is one left in here.
Why did I say?
I just said, like, before.
Can you read that?
Yeah, it's...
It's... Six, I see.
I have P four in January, four seven, and it's all along.
Is it P four for four, forty-six oh three?
Yeah.
And I think that's a good question. I'll come answer it.
Okay.
I think I think I got the wrong spot.
So you think the question might be at forty-six oh three? Okay.
You're at forty-six oh one.
Yeah. Maybe that, yeah. Maybe more so.
Yes, that makes sense. Um, Dave, okay, so P four and forty-six oh one, just said accept all, like, putting reservations on the boards that we have. So I would just ask you, is that, probably something, or was that change? So, uh, we do have the board, um, take formal action, not employee resignations for certified staff, so, um, but technically speaking, again, this goes to kind of the superintendent or the deputy. Typically, when folks would submit their resignation, they'd submit that to Linda in the resources office, and the board does approve all resignations for certified staff. So I would, um, add some clarifying statements to P four to say that, um, the superintendent doesn't accept all employee resignations on the board that we have, and the board approves all certified staff resignations.
I think that was my question, like, because I see this differently, I just wondered if that, if she... That you did help to...
Does that, we build off of what we had addition? Okay. So then we go back, do we think we're okay with forty-six oh two? So, okay. And then forty-six oh three, performance evaluation?
There's no comments.
Forty-six oh four, absence or incapacity?
There's no comments.
Uh, forty-six oh five, gifts and donations?
I do share, I get there, I just gave myself some clarity with the gifts and donations, because they have referenced that, well, they kind of gave like monetary, and it's, they gave more details, so I just put that there, if anyone wanted to read.
Read up on it.
Where, Kate, where did the link come from?
It was from the policies and, um, they did reference, but there was, there's questions I had that the link didn't answer, so. You mentioned golf? Right, so all...
And, and the specific mention of golf is a, um, unique piece of the state law where golf is, so.
Did you send that out? I don't know if that, it comes along to...
And I believe in some of the, um, policies that we sent, which already we have some questions about gifting and what kinds to do, so I think clarity is probably helpful. Uh, forty-six oh six, disciplinary termination.
I have a couple comments to add.
So in paragraph four, it refers to disciplinary deductions, what are those? Paragraph five is not moving over to the board? It's a thought.
Last sentence of paragraph five, disciplinary deductions may only be made in full day weekends.
So my, I, I've never seen that, seen that terminology used either, but my guess is that would be if superintendent's place unknown, it'd be, um, it couldn't be for a half day, it would have to be a full day. Um, but I can, I can verify that language.
Yeah, the one from top of that disciplinary consequences, just...
Very good.
In the main paragraph. I have a question in that same paragraph, it used to be, actually, it was F L S A, I didn't remember those, so this would be, is that put out?
That would be okay.
Well, you were standard something.
All of the paragraphs are standard, yeah.
Oh, that makes sense.
But it would be nice if it's not all together.
Thank you.
That's it.
Four, forty-six oh six. Um, forty-six oh seven, non-renewal?
No questions.
Next, in that section, is there anything else, um, policy wise, that anyone wants to revisit?
Look at that, that's a, so do you know what truce is?
Yeah.
I know we sent them a lot of links.
We've sent them a lot of things, and I've gone back and forth with them, I've read it, so I'm hoping that by our next meeting, I would have a packet of policies that we can revisit in addition to the new set that we can look at, so, um, my contact with this policy work is the person that coordinates all of it, and then he sends it out to different attorneys that have whatever area it is as their area of expertise. So, um, I, I am sort of in trouble with keeping that very busy with this work in addition to, uh, the regular work. So I hope to have more information. And then the last item, um, on my report this, this evening, I was hoping that, um, we could just have a conversation on regarding two upcoming M A S B, um, events. First, um, there is the M A S B spring conference that, um, I sent you all information on today, um, and Nathan under the dates.
So it's the eighteen, nineteenth, or twentieth, or thirty-fourth?
So, um, and that is, um, again, an in-person conference where there are several different CBA plans offered. Um, so if folks are wanting to attend that, if you wanted to look at the link that I sent you earlier today and look at the M A S B conference that is offering, you know, Kevin and I know, we can get you registered for anything you'd like to go. Um, and then the other part that, um, I thought we should probably discuss is the idea that we submit a, um, conference session proposal for the fall conference, which this year is at the end of October. Um, and so far, we, Amy and Nathan have expressed an interest in helping with the planning of that. Um, I know we've talked in previous board meetings about, hey, all this policy work we're doing, that would be great, we should do a session on that. Um, I didn't know if that's what we wanted to do, or any board members had other ideas, and we could sort of dispense with that and try to figure out what we want to do.
And I can, maybe I can speak a little bit from this and through our audience, um, members of M A S B, especially in association with superboards. And so that's our main social educational materials for us to make sure we update, um, on, um, what it was supposed to do. Um, it's been a great wealth of information in the past. I have found for having attended the conference as a presenter and as a non-presenter, it did change the way I got to interact with our districts when I would present, and that, um, I think we become more visible. And so I would encourage us to present, I think it's, it's not a waste of time. I also think that the work between the policies, um, is, is really quite awesome. And I, I think sharing the kind of more than the possibilities that it will end up are distributed with others would be inspiring. Uh, I'm sort of excited to do that possibility, and then I, I'm not that, I'm not the only one that's cheering for it. So thank you, yeah. Uh, I would, uh, also send the information to you, Jennifer, if you're wanting to join us. I think it also sends a different message, one is, if, with several board members and superintendents, in the theory, like the poise-ness of what we're doing, um, that is different than if one is just a couple of members.
I agree, especially when the key part of the structuring of it is superintendent, their process with the administration, and Kevin, and Kevin, all of it is in our structure of, through the documents, and how we, how do you manage something that's so big? Like, the heart, that's a very good question.
I'm supportive of presenting the policy work as well, um, and would love to be involved with the actual presentation. Um, I don't know if there's anything else that anybody listening to me to present on at that conference, besides new policies, but, um, I'm happy to support and present the call. So I wanted to add, M A S B has another conference in August, I don't know if they're calling that the fall conference, but this is another one, like, August sixteen, thirteen, it's in Gaylord, it's in Angeles, Lansing. I would really like to see the district, and the city board of the district, to present on capturing kids' hearts. I was not going to be here in the fall, but I just, there's so many positive things over and over and over again about it. I don't understand anything from any other districts at this, at this conference last November. So I'm wondering about putting that out there, recognizing that I don't have any experience in it, but I will help with planning as much as I can, so that's one I would like to consider as well.
So I don't know, that might, to me, that I feel like it's outside our name, and that it's et tu driven, uh, plural, and probably beyond. That's my, my two cents on that, I think, you know, there might be, there'd be a teacher conference, but there'd be a school conference. Um, I think if we talked about that as part of how we worked on culture and proximity in our district, and we said one of the things we've all discussed with this is capturing kids' hearts, that's a little bit different, but if we want to center the presentation on, on this, to me, it would be principals presenting, and then it starts to feel like, well, then maybe that's not the right conference, I guess, does that make sense? Um, and I don't know what else it's, you know, how, um, active they are in their own professional conferences, um, I don't know. That's weird, so I don't know.
I mean, well, one, I, along that idea, um, we could look at, um, the, the collective efforts of addressing health and mental wellness concerns, um, and just, you know, the way the board has supported the, um, surveying of staff, surveying of families, working with Stephanie Binder with how we're, um, allocating that with the N R S or FOMC, and then also thirty-one A A to support those kinds of programs, and certainly capturing kids' hearts, um, you know, what would come into play with that? Um, the only, the only difference I would say is that, um, if, if, the idea of a conference is to go and say to other board members, this is an initiative that's in our district that's worked really well, and you want board members to be excited about program like capturing kids' hearts. Um, and that'd be the same thing at, if you look at the superintendent level, where we're not, you know, part of the day-to-day implementation, but the overall big ideas and supporting it, and I had lots of conversations with my colleagues about the difference that it's made. Um, you know, we started this year because of how much positive feedback we provided, Shepherd's doing it next year, Alma's dabbled in it, you know, so I, I think word spreads like that, I think spreads at the board level, and then at the district level as well. So I could see that being, um, important.
I also see that with the, um, the partnerships, right, the intermediate school districts, and how they are partnering with us. So it's a, it's a nice model to help, use some examples to show how, I mean, with mindfulness, I mean, all of those projects that we're doing, to try to figure out how to help the students, the partnership with the, you know, community, um, medical. It's showing how, in our community, we're able to leverage what we have, and the partners that we have, to build them, help them have impact. We get that, that's, that would be interesting. From that, that point, you'd be right, you don't have to do that in all of your community, or look to your I C, or whatever other I C.
So you're talking about the partnership of physical therapists and how physical therapists, I'm sure.
How, all, all of these services and employees have been able to structure, it's something that fits our discipline, like, all of our awareness. All of these things have built a mechanism, and have, you know, we've tested different ideas to see which one fits us best, and going through that process and having that tree, which seems to just really chime in with our distance. But I took a lot of, took a lot of organizations to help us.
So there's what I'm hearing, is that we are submitting two proposals to the fall conference, one on policy work, and one on catching kids'. So there's what I'm hearing is that we are submitting two proposals for the fall conference, one on policy work and one on capturing kids' hearts slash emotional wellbeing. Is that kind of what you're envisioning? Can I see Jenny explaining?
How many meetings can we have before?
It's interesting, because I saw it over, so.
Well, I think, I think the, our, our meetings are, is that sound right? So I mean, we're gonna have to, we're going to have to have a smaller self committee meet outside of here. I I just thought that everyone would want to have some general feedback on ideas and and sort of brainstorming. And then I feel like our self committee needs to meet, maybe put some things together and then share with the whole and put that.
So number, um suggest that whoever's meeting the plan is that they organize the information and then break it back so that it's where it landed, submissions that are being.
I'd love you to take the young policy board, um my recommendation of the submission is that it's pretty small. You need a title and abstract, right? Um so it's not, I don't have it as being here involved, um but we want to make sure people are on the same page and we're using it.
So maybe what we could do is that the the four of us could meet here in the next couple of weeks and try to put some of that together then to share with the whole board and then get some more feedback. Um I don't know that we would have that all set up for um our, our next meeting, where we could share ideas and discuss it in April.
Jennifer, do you have any ideas, since you've said it's superintendent's, like, and direct a lot of the state and other districts, either within our I S C or even across the state, or even the state superintendent? Do you see anything that we do that is unique or has been very successful in a unique way that would be good highlighting it?
So, so for, um and I'm sort of surprised I didn't even say this, but, but for us to share, I do think it's probably the policy work that we've done. Um I know that that may not be like the most exciting, like I, I personally get more excited about the capturing kids' hearts work and those kinds of things that that's more um what I gravitate towards. But I, I think the idea that you all have spent so much time breaking down every policy and looking at that. The idea of transitioning from one policy provider to another is a very large, overwhelming task. And we've done that in stride because we've spent so much additional time doing that. And then also I keep going back to how Truon responds to me every time I have all these questions and how much they really enjoy and appreciate what we're doing. So as far as a unique piece, I I would say probably is the policy work. Um although I do think we are, uh we are unique in that this region has built so many partnerships. So when we talk about our partnerships, I don't know that those are solely Mount Pleasant Public Schools partnerships. I think that um the R E S D has done a great job of helping us facilitate. So like when we talk about Isabel's Citizens for Health or Project Open Air or some of those other um organizations that we collaborate with, we're not the only district that does it. So it's great and it's great work, but I I think that that is more of a regional kind of thing. Um at the January's superintendent's conference, um you all know that I presented with the R E S D on the behavior work that we're doing with Jimmy Harris. You got to meet Dr. Harris last year, um and that is also unique and Vancher being, um excuse me. Excuse me, Vancher being a model school for for the behavioral management and that sort of thing, that is unique. But all of that is because our region supports them. So I, I mean, I could see both being variable, um and I think boards would relate to and be interested in both. Um but that, of course, we think the, you know, the positive and the negative, right? If we submit two proposals, then we get accepted for two proposals, then we're going to be two sessions, um which would be five, it would just be more, but that's my thought on it off the top of my head.
I was just gonna say, exactly, part of the subcommittee, just one thing that I think is important with preparation is the work that's also gone in to just building a team. You know, because you could show them the model and it could go terribly if there's not mutual trust. You know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, it's a great model, but I'm just saying, I think part of the success has been that work and and kind of living by some of those agreements before they were even all spelled out. So I even wonder if part of the, you know, it's too long, but part of that educational governance agreement, that might be just part of the conversation of if you don't have something like this in place prior to going into a policy review process.
Can you get our, our workshops in our time, um with you by, help build that team and that collaborate.
I was just gonna support what Jennifer said about that work being unique and possibly inspiring other districts to kind of see what's possible. Um we had that one day in Shepherd, um that's called off, so we're there. Um this, you know, beautiful trauma-informed, um that presentation and like, and you have those questions. Then I posed a question, okay, so we're charged with three things, right? Budget, policies, and superintendent. Taking all of this trauma and information, how does that translate into policy and the work that's answered? And when we felt to ask that either, I think it's really hard sometimes, because people think that because there's a template or there's a policy that, okay, well, that's what we have to do. Um we're just showing that responsibility so that it can be reflective of their district. I think it would be really helpful, I don't think I saw a location like that, it would help me understand, like, oh, you're responsible, like, with how these reflect our district. So I was just gonna support what you said, um, get that done.
So we'll get together as a subcommittee and then come back together before we stick up any more. And that's all for our board discussion.
Thank you. We receive no response since the last meeting. Um and I said that, who's asked first, who's your question first of all? We do have four hundred requests today, from Christian.
Hi, my name is Katie. Um my husband and I moved here about four years ago from Louisiana. We have two kids in the Mount Pleasant School District, one at first grade at Powell's and we have one in fourth grade at Vancher. Our transition here was awesome, like, it was scary. We moved in the middle of the pandemic from Louisiana, but Bishop was great. Um both kids have really great teachers, we had great transitions. Uh that being said, in the last year and a half, definitely, like, this last fall, there's just been some concerns. And if I felt like it was, it was isolated to just, like, one classroom or one school, I would just address that with whatever administrators were there. However, the concerns seem to be, have a more overarching theme that across these different schools. And what I'm specifically referring to is just behavioral issues in the classroom. Um language that's disrespectful and physical behaviors. Uh I know my fourth grader has had to, I get her room before my kids have been having behavioral issues, which I understand. I think a lot of these kids have experienced a lot of trauma. And I just, I was happy to hear, I know that you guys are working on more supportive issues, but frankly and respectfully, I think they need a lot more. These teachers look exhausted, both my husband and I have volunteered in my son's first grade class. And I just feel like it is hard for any of them to be successful. These kids with, have that less than adequate coping mechanisms. You don't need those overnight, you, you need more people to help support them. Um that being said, I, I'm not, I'm here as like an accusatory way, I think we have a unique, we live in a unique place where we can be more collaborative, we have a whole university at our disposal. There is a counseling program, there's about to be a nursing school, there's a medical school. And I'm not naive enough to think that, like, things like this don't happen overnight. And I'm really afraid of losing really good teachers who are getting marked out. And I, I talked to multiple teachers across multiple schools that are really tired. They have to devote a lot of time to helping these kids who don't have the support at all at home. They're just, I just really feel like there needs to be more. And I feel for everybody, I feel like it's hard for anybody to thrive without that environment, the teachers, the kids, the administrators. And I'm like, definitely somebody, like I said, if I can call, when I can volunteer, I'm more than happy to. And there's been lots of great programs, like the um special things they offer in the evening, um for families to come together, I think is a, a great way. But it's just not enough, they, they need more. Um I just, I feel like this was a good place to start, to tell people kind of what I witnessed firsthand, what I hear from, from other people. And it just makes me sad, it makes me sad for everybody who's there. That's it.
This moves us to our consent agenda. First item on our consent agenda is the approval of our February nineteen, twenty twenty four, regular meeting.
Several.
One favor.
Aye.
And you're host. Thank you. We don't have any people that we do, so that includes a space to our board evaluation session.
I would like to extend a thank you to the Michigan Athletic Congressional Authority for their amazing signature on work they did to try and give a cool park, an athletic center for our community. Imagine we all know that was rejected by the community, um which they've made a great loss to our community. But I would like to highlight and recognize some people who spent a lot of time working very hard, achieving a lot of great goals and giving information and is sharing. Um so the commission was formed, right, with John Zhang, Allison Keating, Lisa Diaz, Sishtima, Sam Shingles, Mark Stansberry, and Judy Waggley. They did a lot of work and a lot of very intelligent, conscientious work, and I would like to acknowledge that work. And everything that they did for our, I'm very sorry that it wasn't successful.
I couldn't remember if we talked about this last time, but kind of liked sort of things we're brought up today. You mentioned the Care Solus from here or not, I know, I know they're not, but I just think that makes sense.
That's a great plan, I know they talk about that. Um so Care Solus is a new partnership that we have started this year. Uh we have sent information to our staff and to our families about it. And basically the idea is that we're trying to help um our families access mental health support for their um children, for themselves, for anyone that might need it. Um it's interesting that although we live in a, in a resource-rich community, we know that our families struggle to find mental health providers. And so Care Solus is a program where um we can refer families or they can refer themselves, we can refer staff members or staff members can refer themselves. And they will, with them to determine what the family's priorities are as far as the access to mental health care support. And then they are able to um link that connection and they, they, what they call it, a one-hand up to a mental health provider. Um but being a community, a provider, they make sure that they are, um that they are accepted, the insurance that the family has and all those kinds of things. So um I know we've already done a handful of referrals, I know we've had a handful of folks that have self-referred. So it's just another way um that we notice that families are struggling to get that mental health support. Um I think several of you have attended a board hearing where our family talked about, you know, there's an eight-week wait for us to get into a facility that many of our families use. So because we know there is a shortage of mental health care providers, we wanted to find a way to help our families with that. So that's a great goal, but I'm excited to see how it goes, to be able to do that. But again, that is for staff, any student, and any family member of our students. So it's, it's really a broad mission service as well. Thank you, guys.
I just wanna um say I attended a middle school concert. And it was like, um and to see, it was a middle school one, I mean, to see the kids every time, the first concert they have this time of year, they're magic. Because it was just, they sounded great, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the music, to go down on, and also to remind people about the maybe in these production that's coming up. Um it's for our, our students, I love the heart of the community as well.
Definitely, those shows start next Thursday, the fourteenth, and go through Sunday, the second, so, excited.
I had a couple things. So speaking of the band, I went to the high school band and all these concert, so I would echo a little bit of Melissa's share about just, it's the first one I went to, so I don't have a comparison of the first to this one, but very impressed with that, I'm gonna give a shout out to the cheer team, the place, the industry is just outside of places to go on, some of that, so that was nice to see. Um I did not get to attend the Segnoche Waltz, we tried, uh, Bourbon County with their new building, being in a more visible location in Mount Pleasant. I think to the publishers that the school might handle that. And then um the drum ceremony at the East Bay event. I'd like us to think about how we could incorporate that at other events coming up. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had, I had their East Bay event, which is an amazing thing in itself. The, the support, you know, the support dogs we had that were there, and it was fascinating to watch that work accomplish sort of, and I, yeah, it's a stressful situation for the young man. It was just amazing to watch those dogs do that work and the impact that it had.
Yeah, that's great, thank you for bringing that up today. Um our newest dog, Waff, is at Bowles Elementary and he has been going to Bowles um for a half days, um a couple days a week. And we're still sort of, you see him in, like, our house students can't touch him, but they do the, the way of doing that sort of thing. Um so they're, they're really, um you know, excited to get him going more and kind of building up his talents. But you all also know that this month is, March is reading month, and we are doing one book, one district again. So that means that every student in grades K five is reading the same book together. So if you go on many of our district's Facebook pages tonight, you can see me reading chapter one. I don't know if it was, I was planning for Rosie, but that's another story. Um but for on Friday, we introduced the book to everyone, our therapy dogs did a great video introducing it. And it's just really, it's really fun to watch that become um a great part of our school community. So if everything goes according to plan, we should have another announcement about a new dog coming up in the next month or something like that. We don't wanna literally come urgent again to be ready, so we're waiting for the public to see. I'll let it go there too, so thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, one last thing, I haven't seen this um come up tonight, but a primary community member or a student, a parent, uh who's been using these to voice their concerns and share with us what their thoughts are, how challenging or how positive, uh, Lord, I can say that we're all really grateful for that. I just wanna add to that.